I'll call the meeting to order, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five at five fifteen. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corpey. Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Skogstad-Dietrich.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Beth Schmon.
Here.
Joe Sullivan and Max Yusso. Not, not here, okay. All right, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh yeah, there's instruction. All right, we'll move to approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda as presented?
Rox.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Rox and a second by Tina to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All right, elbows in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Open forum, Elt Student of the Month.
So Ms. Tate will be up here shortly. She just sent me a message. She was in another meeting. She'll be up in just a moment.
All right. Um, do we, we'll go to committee and administrative reports. Do we have a student representative report? Lisa West, do you wanna?
All right, hello, everybody. Um, oh.
Where's the microphone?
Thank you, hello, everybody. Um, I am excited to present some October highlights from Falls Elementary School. Um, and also I just want you to know tonight, we have parent-teacher conferences, so I will be scooting out right after my report. That's okay. I just wanna be present to all our families. Um, so I would just like to share that teachers are working on some important goal goals. They're focusing on explicit instruction with an emphasis on evidence-based vocabulary strategies and student engagement. Um, and so that's going very well. Um, and I'm getting in and able to observe and to help support and model. Um, and so the teachers are also sharing and modeling. So I'm really excited about that. Um, our character strong lessons are supporting some real-life challenges, um, such as getting along with their peers and resolving conflicts. And so, um, all teachers K through six are working on that every morning for a half an hour. Um, our PBIS Bronco Pride Initiative, um, we are working to refocus our efforts to strengthen our Bronco Pride program. Um, we're gonna be having monthly boost celebrations. I call them a boost because, you know, it's just nice to have a little refresher. It's almost like a teachable moment where we take twenty minutes out at the end, talk to all the kids, and just refresh what does Bronco Pride look like, what does it sound like, how are we showing it in action? And then we take time to celebrate, uh, those students who are modeling Bronco Pride and also celebrating our Students of the Month. So we're looking forward to our first Bronco Boost, um, at the end of the month. The cheerleaders are coming too, just to make it more festive. Um, so, um, some of the prizes that we will be giving away, and I say prizes, but really they're rewards, they're incentives to continue the positive behavior. Um, some of them are Bronco T-shirts, um, generously donated by Kyra Hasberg of Hasberg and Customs. She's working on those right now. Um, we also have some Bronco event sports passes from Mr. Ray Hofer. And we're really hoping that over time we can expand our reward, reward program from our local community partners that are really Bronco-focused. Um, we recently held our Falls Elementary Annual Picnic. Uh, it was a great community event. Um, we invited this year the Falls High School Booster Clubs to join us and our sports teams and our high school leadership teams. Um, because again, we wanna bring together all of our, you know, our Bronco community. Um, the Bronco Football Boosters had a burger booth, um, with proceeds benefiting the football program. Um, our girls hockey boosters introduced a new game called Beat the Bronco, um, that will be replacing Choco Pocket the Games this year, so students got to try it out. Um, the volleyball team came and they engaged students in a game of volleyball on the back playground. Um, we had foot, the football team came out and played a game of impromptu football with all the kids on the playground. It was amazing to watch. Um, the Bronco Brew came over and they sold specialty coffees and mini cakes. Um, we had a lot of high school students, um, our student council, our MNHS students. Um, they sat with a lot of children whose families couldn't attend. So we're taking notes and reflecting about what we really will and what we can do to improve, um, for next year. Um, and we are just really grateful to Jeremy Anderson, um, Manny and Harry, our custodial staff for all of their work in setting it up, and the City of International Falls. They brought over a lot of picnic tables for us. And it was chilly, but we had warm hearts. So, um, we had an excellent turnout and again, we'll be working on improving that. Um, we'll look forward to a spring event as well. Um, our recess coaching program has been very successful. We have fifty-eight students participating, ranging from grades five and six. Um, this is providing leadership opportunities for our fifth and sixth graders. Um, they coach, um, students on the playground, positive play, teamwork, inclusion. Um, I talked to a little girl tonight, or did this afternoon, Ashley, she had her little vest on and she was going on, she said, "I'm so nervous. It's my first day." Like, remember, they look up to you. So it's just really been a great, a great program. And Lexi Erickson, our new PE teacher, is leading the way. So she's doing a great job. Our band program's going well. We have twenty-three fifth graders and twenty-two sixth graders participating this year. Um, and so I'm just, I'm really thrilled about that because I think that just is our feeder program for our Falls High School Band program. And they are just loving it. Um, some upcoming events and activities. I'll close with that. Uh, we have parent-teacher conferences tonight and Wednesday. Uh, school pictures this week with Sage Lee's Photography. Our annual pumpkin math is happening in first grade. It's Friday. That's a really big event. Um, we have a book fair planned for November. Um, I don't have the exact date on that, but it's the first week in November. Um, it's, it's a fundraiser for the sixth-grade trip to the state capitol this spring. They're bringing back the sixth-grade trip. So they're doing a lot of fundraising. Um, also thanks to PCA for their generous support, um, financially and supporting, um, us getting the trip going again. Um, and just to, just to wrap it up, at Falls Elementary and Weston Elementary with our preschool, we have a total of five hundred and five students. Um, we are at plus three students for October. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there any thought of leaving a couple of those tables in the front of the school? It's so inviting when you drive by there in the morning.
I really love that. In fact, some of the kids asked about that. They said, "Could we have a picnic table to sit at?" They really liked it. So it's a great idea. I wonder if the city will let us have one.
Borrow a couple.
Or borrow a couple. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, we'll skip back to Elk Student of the Month.
It is my pleasure to recognize Bree Egan as Elk Student of the Month for September. Bree is an exceptional student whose dedication to learning and compassion for others make her a true role model within our school community. She's currently enrolled in college and schools courses, including Introduction to American Politics and Introduction to Creative Writing. In her junior year, we successfully completed several other concurrent enrollment and honors courses, such as Composition One, Understanding Literature, Mathematical Reasoning, World History, um, World History since fifteen hundred, and Honors English Ten. Bree plans to attend the University of Wisconsin River Call, where she will study Pediatric Occupational Therapy, a field that perfectly aligns with her caring nature and desire to help others. Mrs. Manasa says about Bree, "Bree Egan is a truly special student whose intelligence is matched by her kindness and empathy. She is mature and thoughtful, always taking the time to see the bigger picture before making decisions, and she treats others with genuine care and respect. Bree quietly leads by example through her service work, academics, and everyday interactions, and she has a way of making those around her feel valued. She is a joy to have as a student and in our school community. Her future is bright. Bree exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated, compassionate, and engaged learner. We are proud to celebrate her achievements and look forward to all she will accomplish in the future."
Thank you.
Okay, now we have an October Elk Student of the Month, and Carter Vine, will you come up, please? Let's see, and Carter was nominated by Mrs. Hammer, and it is my honor to recognize Carter Vine as the Elk Student of the Month for October. Carter is an exceptional student and leader whose integrity, work ethic, and genuine character make him a shining example within our school community. He is currently enrolled in several college and schools courses, including BSU Math, Pre-Calculus, um, BSU Politics, Introduction to American Politics, and Introduction to Creative Writing. Throughout his academic career, Carter has consistently challenged himself with rigorous coursework. During his junior year, he completed advanced concurrent enrollment in honors classes, such as Composition One, Understanding Literature, Mathematical Reasoning, College Algebra, World History to Fifteen Hundred, World History since Fifteen Hundred, and Honors English Ten, and Honors Algebra Two. His academic curiosity and commitment to excellence reflects his desire to grow and make the most of his learning opportunities. Looking forward to the future, Carter plans to attend Minnesota North College Hibbing Campus, where he will pursue a career as an electrician. His choice reflects both his practicality and his interest in building a meaningful, hands-on career that contributes to his community. Mrs. Hammer says, "Carter's presence has truly enriched our school community the past few years. Through his integrity and intellect, he leads by example, both in and out of the classroom, earning the respect of teachers and peers alike. Carter treats everyone he encounters with respect and goes out of his way to make peers feel seen and that they belong in our school community. His quick wit and natural charisma make him a positive addition to every classroom. While his creativity and drive push those around him to strive to do better as well, as a leader amongst the student body, he inspires not others not only through his words, but through his actions. Whether it's taking initiative in school activities, stepping up to volunteer, or offering encouragement to classmates, he brings positive energy to each situation. One of Carter's best traits, and what makes him especially remarkable, is the way he acknowledges everyone he encounters with sincerity, even taking the time to greet our youngest preschool students in the hallways or check in with our middle schoolers. His combination of character, leadership, and integrity makes him a truly deserving student for this honor. Carter's leadership, compassion, and dedication embody the values we strive to cultivate in all of our students. We are proud to honor him as October's Student of the Month and celebrate the many ways he contributes to our school each day." Jump on a football field or on a basketball court, I will say.
Emmett.
All right, Emmett Olson. It is my pleasure to recognize Emmett Olson as the Elk Student of the Month for October. Emmett is an exceptional student, athlete, and leader whose energy, determination, and kindness make him a cornerstone of our school community. He is currently enrolled in several college and schools courses, including Politics Twelve Hundred, Introduction to American Politics, and Introduction to Creative Writing. Throughout his academic career, Emmett has challenged himself with a rigorous course load, completing classes such as Comp One, Understanding Literature, Math Reasoning, College Algebra, World History to Fifteen Hundred, World History since Fifteen Hundred, and Honors Algebra Two. His strong academic performance, combined with his leadership in extracurricular activities, reflects a well-rounded commitment to excellence both in and out of the classroom. Looking ahead, Emmett plans to play college baseball and is currently working with a coach to run the Wright School match. Once he does, he plans to complete his four-year bachelor's degree, beginning with general education course while exploring interests in dermatology and other science-related fields. Emmett has expressed that he enjoys staying active and engaged. He thrives when he's busy and contributing rather than sitting behind a computer screen. His drive, focus, and ambition will undoubtedly serve him well in any path he chooses. Mrs. Hammer says about Emmett, "When asked what it means to be a Bronco and part of LHS, Emmett's answer was everything. If you ask anyone at FHS what Emmett brings to our school community and what we'll miss most when he graduates, their answer would be the same, everything. He is truly a vital part of our school community, consistently serving as a positive and impactful presence among his peers. Emmett is a natural leader who leads by example, always the first to step up and lend a hand, often before being asked. His personable and friendly nature makes him one of the most loved members of the student body, and he treats every individual he encounters with genuine respect and kindness. Whether supporting classmates, mentoring younger students, captaining the football team, or contributing in the classroom, he does it all with integrity. Emmett is not only hardworking and respectful, but also an outstanding student whose character and leadership make him truly deserving of this honor. Emmett embodies the spirit of our school, hardworking, kind, and community-minded. We are proud to recognize him as October's Student of the Month, and we celebrate his many contributions to our school and his peers." And this is a group of seniors. I will just say that I would be so sad to lose. Um, this is really just a really big group of leaders, and I just love Emmett. He is truly a leader. He really, um, helps these little kids, and he brought back the drum line for homecoming. That was really awesome. Okay, so our numbers right now are at four hundred and thirty. We're down five from last month. Um, and I think some of those are like status change to the ALC too, because we're up six at the ALC. So, um, because in September we were at twenty, and now we're at twenty-six there. Um, so we do have some kids that are doing partial enrollment at the ALC and in the building, so that is definitely a positive of having the ALC on campuses, that they are allowed to, um, have easier access to some of the classes here on campus. Um, let's see, and I am still learning a lot. We have parent-teacher conferences clearly tonight and Wednesday. Um, we have Stephanie, um, her last name starts with a W, and she's coming from Lake Superior. Even if I remembered it, it's really hard to say. Um, but she's coming from Lake Superior College on Wednesday to talk to families, and then we'll probably be having her go onto some classrooms of tenth and eleventh graders. And she'll be talking about, um, our partnership with LSC to offer an AA in-house. So we are still actively working on that. And then we're just actively right now, I've been having some meetings with, um, a gentleman who really specializes in trimester schedules and really talks about, um, when you're looking at your schedule, really looking at that more of just, not just a schedule, but it's like a vehicle for school improvement, right? So just like, also, while we're talking about schedules, we're talking about policies and why you offer certain classes the way you do in, um, alternating years, and just policies in general, how you offer things. So those have been some really, um, engaging and good discussions that we've had that we hope can, um, drive some good opportunities for our kids to offer more electives, both, um, concurrent enrollment, uh, electives and, um, just general electives. Uh, we also are still learning a lot about career pathways. Um, it's a lot to wrap your head around, but we still are learning a lot and hoping to offer more of those. So really, that's what I feel like I've been doing is, um, just really immersing myself in that because before we know it, it will be scheduling time, and we wanna be ready to present a good schedule and, um, be done. So. Rox, head.
Um, could you explain a little bit about trimester schedules?
Yeah, so trimesters is one option that we're currently looking at, and that is like, so it basically, we would offer like three sessions. Um, and they're about twelve weeks long, each one, and so there's definitely some real positives. And then kids would actually only take five classes a day. And of course, if they had an open period, they might take four if they're a little bit older. But teachers would teach four out of five. So we would definitely focus on less preps for the teacher, so that's a positive there. And then it's less classes for the students to take to and manage, right? Because you think about it, like, we've had a lot of discussions about, even when you go to college, a lot of times you're not taking seven classes.
No.
A semester, right? So then we're asking kids to manage seven classes every day, and it's a lot. So basically, our class periods would, uh, be a little bit longer. Uh, we're still looking at trying to get an advisory at the high school. A lot of staff have expressed some, a deep interest in having that here. And we do think that would be a driving force in some of our SCL and even just like touching base with kids for announcements and things like that, because we really don't have a period where we get to do that. So that's still something that we're looking at. How can we eat that out in our amount of instructional minutes and still give kids the best bang for their buck? So there's some other positives too, like, um, in a trimester, you can offer some classes, like, you can offer some fall, fall-winter. You can offer some where they start in the winter-spring, and you do that too because then you leave some like, they call it casualty spaces for kids who maybe don't pass their fall class, and then they need to hop into the winter class. And so it gives them just a little bit more opportunity to retake that class instead of waiting till it comes around again. We talked about, um, they call classes singletons when they're just offered once, so we talked about, um, that's a lot for teachers to prep. So just like really looking at that as we build our schedule and being conscious. Um, there's just so many things that you don't think about in building a schedule, and I'm like a baby when it is talking about building a high school schedule, right? I'm willing to learn. Um, and he is super knowledgeable, and I've actually had Mr. Eversen has sat in on some of these meetings too, so it's nice to have kind of the background of why some of these classes were offered, and then we can hear what they've done. Like, he was a superintendent in California and Michigan, um, and a principal as well, so. Um, and there are some schools that do trimesters. Moose Lake, um, for example, is a school similar to our size that runs a trimester schedule that has been pretty successful. But it also offers, it's a nice change too, like, because let's face it, not everybody always gets along, and sometimes you do have a class with somebody that you don't get along with, whether it's a teacher or a student. And, you know, right now we're saying, "You gotta stick it out until January twentieth." It's a long time if you don't get along very well with somebody or you're like really struggling, right? And now we can say, "Hey, can you make it until Thanksgiving, or can you make it until right after deer season?" And then you get a fresh start, a new class, you know what I mean? So looking at that. And then also, some of the classes that were offered all year long are generally offered over two trimesters. So that opens up our ability to offer more electives without having to have staff, and that's huge. Because we wanna offer more opportunities, because right now, it's like, when I learn to schedule and I was helping kids with schedules, it's really hard to tell a kid, "Well, you can take study hall or basket remain." That's all we have this summer, I'm sorry. And so it's gonna be really nice to be able to offer some more electives, but still maintaining our current staff.
And what's SDL?
SDL.
SEL. SEL.
Oh, social emotional reading, when I talk about that.
Oh, you said SEL.
I'm sorry.
I kept thinking the whole time you were talking, what? What? Okay.
I'm sorry. Any other questions about trimesters? I, that's probably like just that and like a quick nitty-gritty. There's so many other benefits and things to talk about, but I still am really in the infancy learning stages as well.
I have a question on it.
Yes.
So would everybody go to less classes in a day than you're saying?
Yes.
The same credits, like, would they?
So, no, we would have to evolve our, our credits to look different too. In fact, we actually, today, we just talked about a class that like, we're like, "Oh, that makes sense that people should have that class, and that should be a half a credit." So we were talking about adding a half a credit. I think it was a math class. I've had so many, today's been a busy day. But no, credits would have to change, and he would help us through that process. Like, he's right now, he's retired, so he's volunteering our time and like really digging into our schedule with us, and so it's been really nice. But it would be an evolving process. We would start with the, like, the juniors next year. They would need so many credits to graduate, and then so on, until you get to the required, what you're gonna do.
Thank you. And there's a process. So this is just more of the research phase right now, um, and then Principal Tate would create some sort of presentation. There's an approval process, obviously, that we would go through, um, but really good information. Yeah, really good.
Because it's, of course, the negotiation year, and of course, their contract is, you know, their schedule's really outlined in their contract, which makes it tricky, I think, to do different things, so that's something to think about. But I do think that the trimesters would be a lot of benefit for both students and teachers from what we're learning so far. Even like Mr. Eversen is saying that, who is like, can't teach all dogged tricks, and he's a math teacher, so he's very black and white. So when I hear him saying like, like, I'm seeing like a lot of light and sparks, and I'm hearing him say like, "Oh, wow, there's some good information."
Oh, that's great.
Presented. Yes, it is great, isn't it? Any other questions? No, it's very exciting. I, I hope that we can bring our kids more opportunities, because we have a great staff. We just need to get some more opportunities in the going. Let's keep moving.
I love your enthusiasm about it. I really do.
It is really exciting. I mean, it is like, I talked about before, it's scary to come over, like, you, you change is hard, but it's been really like, I don't know if I've said this, but the, the senior class that I really love, they were my first preschool class. So it's like, kinda seeing them go full circle. But it's also, I mean, you love each building for different things, and being able to help these kids now make decisions or find passions that they might, are interested in that will help them, you know, years beyond, is, is really exciting too. So each level has a different excitement. You know, just like having kids, you're like, the new scare.
Right. Like, I can tell that you're very excited about it, that you're very into it, which I think is exciting for us to see too.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's awesome. Well, anytime I think we can bring new opportunities, and especially at the same cost.
Yes.
Thinking right, Missy.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Molly?
Oh, my tire. Thank you. I was afraid, because I was like, I saw so many people. You have to like up your game. I can. So I have my community ed report. Um, just a quick kind of overview of what early education's doing. Um, last week, we had a really successful early childhood screening day on Wednesday. Um, we partnered with Kutaska Head Start, and we screened like forty preschoolers, so they're ready for kindergarten next year. So I was like, "Oh, a cone that I faced." Um, and then we were also able to partner with Coochie County Public Health, um, the hospital, Minnesota North College, and our school nurses, and they were able to provide nursing staff, lower kind of short staff. So I was incredibly grateful for all those people coming over and helping us that day. Um, and then last week, we awarded thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in early learning scholarships to our preschool families.
Wow.
So we were able to award, it's called the Pathway Two Scholarship, and it's to, um, pay for like tuition and our program and such. And so we were able to award seven families. So that felt like, felt good, felt good. Um, yeah, it's part of the job that you kinda like doing, because you're like, "Oh, I can help you out," and you're like, kind of going together. So that was really exciting. Um, and then community education report, we wrapped up ATV training last week, so we had twenty-seven, or twenty-five participants that were really well. We had Crafty Night with Angela Shuler. Um, if you don't know Angela, she's like the best. She's our pals coordinator too, so she works in my community ed office with me. Um, and she's like the most crafty human being on earth. So she was able to run a crafty class, and yeah, and we're looking forward to our next one. She's kind of like in the planning stages of a winter one, so that'll be exciting. And then we also offered a cross-country camp, which Cheryl Hendrickson came up to me in my office, and she was like, "Molly, I think we should have a camp for elementary students to have cross-country." So we were like, "Let's run it." Um, we had twelve elementary students sign up, and they were just like coached and learning more about cross-country, and they ran at the home meet last week. So really exciting times for them. Um, let's see, we have upcoming drivers training next week with Jeremy Anderson. Um, Jeremy does it all. He's doing drivers training, doing facilities, all the work. Um, and then we have life, life hazard certification coming up in the next month. We are still looking for a couple of people to take it, um, just so our person from the Iron Range can come up. And then we are currently working on like a community feedback survey for community ed. I would like to like, kind of like dive into what the community wants in terms of like ideas and developing kind of their strategy moving forward. Um, so it's representative of our community and what they want. Um, and then ECFB, we have our upcoming Haunted Homeways event on Thursday from five thirty to six thirty. So that's ages, our birth to five, and then all the siblings are welcome. And we have a whole bunch of community preppers coming in. They hand out some treats for our little kiddos, so that'll be exciting. Um, Janice Sabalaski, who's running ECFB, is doing an excellent job. She took the kids to the fire hall and their families, and that was really exciting. I saw on Facebook, and I was like, "Oh." So, no, she's doing a really, really great job, kind of working on making it her own too, which I'm really proud of. So, yeah, good program. We don't have West End.
Yeah.
What tool are you using for preschool screening?
We were using the Dial Four.
Okay.
For preschool screening. Yep. So our team down there ran it last week through West End, and it went really, really smoothly. And I heard positive feedback from all the teachers down there that like,
Good.
They liked the layout too, and it was like nice, because I think in the past, they've had it in like different wings of, I don't know, one of the hallways in the elementary school, and they're like, "Yeah, this worked better," because it's like so conducive to the flow, so.
Do you find that it's helpful in helping identify, uh, young ones who should be referred to special ed?
Yep, yep. So we had quite a few referrals, actually, and then Ginger Christensen will handle those and pass them off to, um, either, I'm trying to think, Help Me Grow. Um, so those will be handled, I think, in the next couple of weeks and such, so, yeah, successful though.
Good.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Beth, you want?
Tina's doing basketball sign-ups tonight, so I don't know if she'll be stepping in. Um, before I start, Lenia, come on up. I would like to introduce and let Lenia speak. Um, as you know, there's been three key positions that have had turnover, um, since my arrival, and one of them is my assistant, and our new position to the district, uh, as a grant writer position, which has been, um, very successful for our first year. And when Ms. Hall left, I was concerned about who would fill the position, because it, it really is an independent position where it comes with somebody who is self-starting, but I also, you know, to me, um, energy and personality is really important when you're representing our school district. So, um, I'd like to introduce to you Lenia Imhoff. Um, she is a ray of sunshine and ball of energy, and she's been here for a week, and... And I just can't speak highly enough about what I've seen from her in this short amount of time together. So I'd like to introduce you to Linnea and let her tell you about herself.
Awesome.
Good evening, everyone. That's Linnea Imhoff. I am so thankful to be here. I did not present a speech, but I do want to express my gratitude. Um, and this opportunity to be part of this wonderful school district, it, it is, it is an honor to me. And, um, as I strive forward and each and every day, I just want you to know that I am here to work for, for you guys and the students, number one, the community. It's, you know, whole community, whole child, whole school. Um, that does, that, that is part of who I am. Um, and every ounce of work that I will do for the school district and the students, um, really it comes from the heart and is a will to want to help. And I will do my best to, to, to do that every day that I come into work. Um, a little bit about me, I am, um, I am from Bemidji originally. I married an Imhoff. The name seems to be very familiar to us. So, so we, we moved, um, we moved to, to Little Fork, so I do, I do live in Little Fork. Cut that part. But, uh, but we, we do, we live in Little Fork. Um, we have two young boys. We have a three-year-old and a four-year-old, Lynn and Johnny. And so, um, the importance of education, the importance of, you know, of families and whole families, it's really, it's truly important, um, important to me. So with that, it is, it is a true pleasure to be on the team and with, with you all. Please feel comfortable to come to my office, reach out via call or an email. Um, if there's ever any concerns, this is my first board agenda that Kendra helped me with. So, but please reach out to me if you see any concerns or if you hear of anything. I'm here, I'm available and I want you to know that and I want the community to know that as well.
Thank you.
Linnea, do you have your name on the, it's phone extension list? Sometimes I find it hard to get a hold of, is your name on there?
It'll be updated by Christina. Yep.
Okay, good. Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Your family now.
Thank you.
There's never enough hours in the day, as you know. Um, I'm gonna give you a, a brief outline. Our November and December board meetings are gonna be busy. We'll have CISO here, um, we'll have Ziegler here. They'll be presenting on the solar rays, so we can get an update on that. They'll all be joining us virtually, but I think there's really some significant information that will be happening at our November and December meetings. So if there's any information that you would like presented from CISO or on our solar, um, work that's being done, let me know and I'll make sure that's part of the presentation. Um, before we get started, I just, you know, the school year is off and running. We are into week seven already and it, it's hard to believe that we're gonna go into November very, very soon. And, you know, I know sometimes people think, you know, gratitude is thrown around freely, but I, I really cannot say enough in what I have seen, um, from Principal Tate and Principal West since we started the new school year. And their work, um, in researching the direction and the vision for the future of 361. Um, people don't always get to see what administrators do behind the scenes or the hours that they work. And though everybody in education works really hard, um, sometimes we forget the leaders. And I just want to say, not only have they dove in and really sort of researching, um, based on some really good data that we're receiving from the state and from our community stakeholders, I just want you to know that, um, as, as a newer superintendent, I'm a year two now. So I can't say go to baby superintendent school anymore. Um, but what I can say is I feel a great partnership with them in the vision and the direction that we're moving together. In addition to, you know, when we talk about another layer, our, our directors, you know, from our coordinators, our Indian Education Coordinator to our Technology Director, um, Community Education. I just want you to know that even though I know change is hard, these people are rising to the ca, the occasion and they're leading their groups very well. And there's bumps and there's challenges that come our way. But as a, as a school district leader, um, I could not do my job without them or without the school board. And I don't ever want to think, um, that they're not being recognized for their work because what's happening that behind the scenes is, is truly, um, something wonderful to be seen. So I just want to extend my gratitude. In addition, um, the, the school community partnerships that are starting to happen, uh, I think they've always existed in this community. Some, you know, Mrs. Rossonson once told me that if there's ever something hard that happens in our world, um, or our community, it's this community that you want to be a part of. And I continue to see our community partners show up every day for kids. Um, from donating money to coming into our schools and working with our teachers and our students to just asking, what can I do to help? Um, we are seeing some significant donations coming in for athletics, to activities, to classroom supplies. And that partnership, um, we wouldn't have many of the things that we have that are extras that public school funds can't fund. So I also want to recognize and thank, um, our community partners. As we get ready to move forward, I want to do a brief recap. Um, so we also have this on the record of our board, um, work session that we had last week. And I appreciate the notes that we have, um, from our chair, Chair Member Smith. So I just want to recap some of the things that we talked about. We addressed our strategic plan update with Teamworks. Uh, last spring, we had a, a group of board members, teachers, paraprofessionals. We had a large group come together to look at the work ISD 361 had previously done. And some of that work began during COVID, which was a really hard time in education. But what we looked at was where have we been and where do we want to go? And we started pulling out key areas that have been, um, that really rose to the top through surveys, uh, through state data. And some of those key areas that really had to be revisited and what we recognize as being priorities from the already, um, in place strategic plan were culture and climate. We know that that was a number one priority when I came in as the superintendent by, um, all stakeholders from staff to community members to our families. And by recent, um, data results, we are moving in the right direction. We still have a ways to go, but we are positively moving in the right direction. The second area that really, um, had to be revisited and prioritized was our infrastructure and our facilities. Um, from everything from breakage to non-compliance, to, um, making sure our processes and procedures for efficiency. We really, we felt that that was a priority because we all like to work in a space that's clean, safe, welcoming and, and, and kept current. So that was a priority that is going to be, um, reignited and brought to the, as a priority in our strategic plan. And then as we know, um, school attendance, attendance and enrollment. So I would say when we're, we're talking about our top three priorities for the district, um, and these were areas that were listed in there, although attendance really wasn't, um, a priority. We would, I would say now, moving forward, when Teamworks come back, comes back to work with our school district and our, our staff and our board and our community, those are gonna be the three continued areas that we have to focus on. In addition to our fourth layer, which is going to be led by our principals and myself and our, our district committee teams is the expanded learning opportunities. So when we talk about, you know, expanding pre, uh, early childhood education, childcare, online learning, and our principals and our, our district committee members will, um, be leading that work. So those are the, the four pillars that we are going to reprioritize for our strategic plan. We also had a brief conversation about, um, the budget and our work with CISO. And I would say, um, to date, the, the work with CISO has been positive. We don't have the opportunity to have a lot of people who are well-versed in school finance. And as you know, school finance is a really difficult beast. But then you layer that, um, with grants and you layer that with a school referendum. So I think having a new superintendent, principal shifts and having CISO be able to come in and continue that work with us that is being down the, down the pipeline. We're not gonna look at a school finance person. But I think that consistency really matters as we're, we're working at a really significant level of, um, public dollars and just making sure we're managing that. As we, as we talked, I also shared that one of my visions is for our school district is to ensure that our leaders of different departments and areas have a budget to work with. So what that means is, um, Principal West, Principal Tate will have an actual budget that they will get, that they have to live within their means, right? So when we talk about supplies, when we talk about staffing, um, the goal is to create a technology budget for our technology directors. So our director knows what their, um, their dollars that will be available for the year and that they will prioritize with their team based on the needs of our school district. So right now, CISO is implementing that for all key leaders. And then, um, myself and CISO are meeting with those directors or administrators and going through the process and ask, they're able to ask questions. They're able to get feedback, um, based on the coding. And that will help alleviate some of that extra that is placed on our business office.
Good.
So we'll talk more about that, um, at our November board meeting. As we talk about facilities and committees, um, one of the things that I just want to update you on and that really the referendum falls under there, we are ahead of the game when it comes to the, um, asbestos removal and some of the, the wiring and things that need to happen in order for us to start that big construction. So one of the things that is going to happen is the bids for Rock Arena close. The, the bid opening is on the 23rd here. But the other piece is that we have the opportunity to start construction earlier at Falls Elementary. So the teams, um, Principal West and I and our committee, our board member, committee members, um, have to get together and we're gonna talk about what that timeline could look like. And they have committed, um, to start the process early, um, with getting up in the fixtures and the wiring. They have committed to working with schools out and through the night, so it doesn't disrupt the school day.
Oh my gosh.
So I think we're in a very, um, fortunate position for call behind. We were in getting accurate bids that they're gonna be able to come in and do this work. Um, so that information will be more updated after we get to bid opening. I have asked them to revamp the schedule, um, the, the construction schedule for the board. Um, and so they're updating that following the bid openings on the 23rd. The one thing, um, I did talk about with the board during our, uh, work session was my, um, continued concern about the infrastructure and, um, some of the outdated areas or areas that possibly weren't kept up to date that needed to be in addition to some of our historical non-compliance areas. Um, I'm putting together a list for you to, Jeremy and I are working on that, so you know what's been done, um, what's yet to come. But the space, the state has been really fantastic in working with us as, as new leaders within the district. The other areas that, um, I'm finding we need to continue to seek revenue on, our, our grant applications are really important. Um, we are seeing a lot of grant funding come out for CTE, um, innovation grants, childcare grants. And right now we are in the process, um, Linnea is currently working on a, a grant that is due on Friday through MDE and it's, it's a community schools model grant. This grant is an opportunity to really change the way we look at education and the vision of the future for ISD 361. And our team has been working behind the scenes on what the narrative and the data needs to be presented in that to make our story really compelling. So, um, we just found out about this grant last week, so we have pulled together people. Um, we just had a half day working on this. Um, there's gonna be, we're gonna be asking people for, you know, letters. We're gonna be submitting photographs, um, budget plans. But I have been a part of a school district who has a community school model for, um, a, an area of, of the community that really struggles, um, socio-economic. And I can tell you what a community school model does for a school district is game-changing. It's really about a whole school, a whole community, a whole child partnership. And your school really becomes a place for all. Um, and, and it's really, um, based on data. They come in, they, they would hire someone, um, they would fund the person and they do a comprehensive needs assessment and they start acquiring all the data. Um, so the opportunity is great. Obviously, I am a, uh, the glass is half-full kind of leadership. Um, we're gonna give it our all, but we'll be submitting that on Friday and cross your fingers.
That's amazing.
If not, we'll continue to seek, um, the grants that we have. I did present, uh, to the county, uh, last week, uh, vape detectors. They are, um, giving their opioid dollars. They have the opioid money to be given away. Um, I did present to them, um, regarding, um, Principal West, when she left, one of her goals was to get vape detectors in all of our spaces. Um, because research shows that, you know, we just had Tall Cop here for the opening of the school year is, is those, um, exposure to drugs or tobacco use can, they can be an indicator of what's next, what's next, what's next. It's not always the track that people go. Um, but we are finding that even in some of our attendance and truancy, that's sometimes where kids go and, and they go, they, they go into the bathroom. So we want to work with students. It's not about catching kids and that aha, we want to give you an hour of detention. It's like, what do you need? How can we help so you don't make this choice? So we'll hear more on that soon, um, but that took place also last week. When we talk about the policy and committees, um, segment of the, the retreat, we did talk about some of the handbooks that have still not been finalized with the board. And the goal will be to have all of those ready for the November meeting. One of the things that have transpired this year is with the changing of staff and the staff shortages that we've ran into, we haven't been able to meet like we, we should have. And, um, though I'm not making excuses, I do want you to know that that is a priority for us. And we will have, uh, two handbooks be presented to you at the November meeting. Policies, well, now that we have, um, my assistant back, um, Ms. Hall and, uh, Ms. Imhoff met, um, they went back through all the policies where Ms. Hall left off. And so you will now see the policies start coming back through and get those finalized. The policies, I also will be embedding into my communication with staff and asking them to go through some of our policies. Um, I'll just be releasing a little bit at a time. But I think it's really important that people take a moment and know our policies, um, whatever role that they play within our district. And last but not least, uh, we have been working with, uh, I have been working with the team from the district on our district attendance policy and working to align it with the state. Um, I've been working with the juvenile task force and then we've also created an attendance team within the district. So we are creating a new, uh, district attendance and truancy policy. And that, uh, letter is slated to go out this week to our families, so they know what to expect. Um, and then if you have any questions on that, you can certainly let me know. It's very similar to what we have, but they need to know, um, the chain of communication that's going to happen when they've missed three days, when they've missed five days, when they've missed seven days, and then what happens when they've missed 10 to 12. Because once you get to 10 absences, you are what the state would recognize as chronic, chronically absent from school, which starts setting you behind for the grade level standards. So families are gonna be getting a letter from me to let them know what that, that process will look like.
Good.
Fundraising and community partnerships, we had, um, some great conversation. I, I cannot state, overstate this enough. We would not have the fundraising opportunities we have if it was not for the people and our businesses in this community. Um, whether it's a garbage service, a storefront, um, a service provider. And, and I know as a childhood raised in a business, um, the opportunities to donate are daily. And, you know, so we had greater conversation about really taking a deeper look when it comes to our asks as a school district, um, from the fundraising we do to what our booster clubs are doing, to what Falls Education Foundation is doing, and how do we streamline some of that work? And are we following our district policy on fundraising? Are we making sure that the fundraisers are going through the school board to be approved? And are, is there merit behind the fundraiser in what we're asking for in addition to what we're asking our families to do? Um, so that is a conversation that the athletic committee is going to be having at one of their future meetings. But that was something that we talked about at the retreat also. Um, as you know, we, it's a negotiations year. Um, we are, are in the heart. Um, I can't thank Member Cosby from her school, Deech, and Johnson enough. Um, they have been at every session with me and I have really appreciated their insight and their ability to partner with me through the negotiations process. I feel like it has gone very well so far. And I would say that, um, we're at a standstill right now because we're waiting on insurance. We just went out for insurance bids. Um, we just had the presentation on it. There were a lot of questions around it. So Board Member Cosby made the suggestion to offer two sessions, um, information sessions to all of our school district members to come and listen to the presentation so they could hear it. And then what we will do is we will put it out to vote to our members and then we will start back, I will start back up with the, the teacher bargaining unit. But I think, um, that transparency is really important. And as we know, insurance rates continue to go up for all of us. Um, but I feel that so far the conversations have been, have gone really well in our time together. Uh, last but not least, you're gonna see a survey going out, um, on our childcare. Um, we have been working with the state. We've been attending seminars. Um, our Molly Larson has been interviewing childcare centers. She's also in the process of considering going down to see our former community ed director, Rachel Armdal, and spend some time down there and look at her site. Um, and we are going to be putting out a survey on who is interested in after-school and or before-school childcare. So you're gonna see that survey come out. Um, it just was submitted to me last week. It just was submitted to me last week. I'm going to go through it, and that will go out to our families, and then we'll present that data and take a look at that data in a future board meeting. But we are hoping to have that open in January and/or February at the latest. Regional superintendent groups, they are working hard. We're following legislation closely, and I know Members spoke at Deech, we'll give a presentation on that. But one of the things that I do want to recognize is International Falls is not the only school district that has great concerns with school attendance and enrollment. Some of the biggest barriers are other modes of education platforms that people can access. So we are not alone, but as a rural school district, we are really in an unfortunate situation because we don't have, you know, competing districts. So really, we are losing that opportunity to other school districts that are very close by one or two, but also the component of PSEO and the component of homeschooling. And so, you know, we have to make sure that our mission is committed to offering the best educational experience and also the best experience when it comes to growing up as a young adult and making sure that people feel prideful in the school that they attend and they represent. So this is another area that is on the docket for a discussion with superintendents, and that is mandated, unfunded mandates. We're seeing that grow, you know, we're seeing insurance increase, and we're just, the funding isn't there in an area that is really being talked about as special education services right now. It is a big one. The due process time, the paperwork time, is almost exceeding the time that our educators can spend with kids. And the funding behind that just is not there. So there's creative solutions being presented, there's legislation brought forward on what could be done differently, but that seems to be a really hot topic right now in education. That is really all that I have. I could probably talk to you for an hour. I get very excited about the work that we're doing, and my door and my phone are open. I can't promise I can get back to you within 24 hours, but I will get back to you. Do you have any questions?
I do have one question because I didn't see it talked about, and maybe it wasn't at the meeting, but with Bruce's position, how's that going to be filled?
Great question. So in what I read, we have to put it on a ballot, but when I spoke into MSBA, because it was in a threshold of a window, we don't. So the attorney at MSBA is checking into this for us. He's going to get back to me. So I'll put out a report to you as board members this week, but we will be filling the position, how that looks. If anybody's interested in that, they can certainly reach out to me, and I can guide you in the right direction, but we will be looking to fill Mr. Ramoryn's position on the board. The remainder of his term is just over a year.
When would that start?
January 1st.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, since we're on this topic with the Bruce's position, anyone can come into the office and ask to put their name on the ballot for November. They pay for, I think it's, what did we pay, $2 or some?
Yeah, the fee is very small. They can come in and put their name on the ballot, or they could do a writing campaign. There's a number of different things. And once I get the final word, I'll put out a statement on social media, and I will let the board members know, and we will get that information out. And it'll probably end up going to the new state also.
Okay.
But anybody can apply.
There is a deadline, so, yeah. The other thing I wanted to know about was, have you heard anything from Northland Co-op regarding, you know, there's going to be huge cuts to special ed? Is there going to be anything affecting the co-op services for special ed to International Falls because of the statewide cuts?
That's a really fantastic question. I can't say today, yes. What I can say is Principal West and Principal Tate and I are watching our numbers very closely when it comes to the numbers that we serve, students who receive special education services. We're looking at caseloads, but I always want to remind people, there's a vast difference between caseload and service minutes. Those are two very different things. Obviously, our numbers are not going down, they're going up, and that is a national trend. So I don't foresee anything glaring right now, although one of the things that I would say Superintendent Grover, Principal Tate, and Principal Eversen did, is they applied for additional funding. So when you're talking about the ADSES grant and you're talking about some of the other funding streams, we had those for a short amount of time. So as we continue to have the opportunity to look at additional avenues for funding, one of the things that I will always be making decisions on is data. And the data will be, our financial decision-making will be driven on data, and that's, I mean, what we have to do. But right now, there's not been any hard lines that have been delivered by the state. Now we'll start getting into our advocacy briefings, and we'll start learning more as we get ready to go into the new year.
Okay. The other thing that I hope does not occur, and I can tell you that it has occurred in the past, is that people that are doing the evaluating of kids that are possibly in need of special ed, that they are not pressured in how they interpret the scores and the evaluation data that they collect, because I know it can happen. There's a fine line in how you interpret it, and I hope that because of the cuts that are bound to come at this point, that we don't end up putting them on the backs of kids in need.
I appreciate that statement, and I would echo your statement. I want you to know that I have, prior to coming as a superintendent, I also had the honor of working with the Northland Center in, the Service Co-op in Virginia. And I can tell you, I was on the administrative side of that, and the integrity of their evaluation process and the data that they use. Our school psychologist, in addition to our directors that come up and spend time with us, that has been a deep-rooted investment the last, and I can't speak before my arrival, but I can tell you that that's been a deep-rooted investment by the administrative team and myself about ensuring that they're coming up and educating our staff, talking about the data points. And that's the one thing I did not address in my presentation, is I am working with an individual right now to put all of our data together. So when you start looking at MCA scores and you start looking at students who receive special education services, data of integrity, I mean, that has to be a priority for any school district, but I think the evaluation process, we have to do right by kids. That is our number one priority, and that's why it's our job to hire good people. And I feel like we have really good people working for us, and we have to make sure that we're getting kids and families the services that they need based on data of integrity and testing results and outcomes. The one thing I do want to tell you, the reason I am moving forward to looking at a comprehensive data plan for the district, I want to put together a historical data hub, is that the new MCA results are out. I will be talking about those in November, December, and my prediction was that we'll continue to see the school attendance mimic the outcomes of our MCA's. And I can tell you, our attendance and truancy issues of our students is contributing deeply to the lack of proficiency within our school district. And that, you will see that, that is why this presentation is so very important. It needs to be presented to the board, it needs to be presented to the community. You know, I was a parent, you know? You want to go on those trips. You want to maybe take a day off and drive down to Duluth. But when you start getting to 10, 15, 20, 30, 50 days of school, your child most likely will not be proficient at their grade level standards unless there is a severe learning disability of some capacity. So I think it's important data, and I think it's something that we are going to continue to address and educate our staff and our community on, and I think we will see the paradigm shift as we continue to collaborate more together.
Is there a process by which, because you said it contributes to the lack of proficiency, and when kids miss more school, obviously, then they're not meeting their grade level equivalent. And I know historically, holding kids back hasn't been the most popular thing to do, and I know that it's not done very much, but, you know, at what point do we look at that kind of stuff? And you hate to keep pushing these kids forward if they're not ready for the next level?
Yeah, that is a hot topic in the middle world, because parents do have the right to make the decision if they want to keep their child back, but you have to show a deep-rooted data and narrative as to why. They do not support holding kids behind in the education unless they're truly at a very young age, they want kids to be with their peers. Core instruction, very important. That's that core grade level instruction that's happening in our math classrooms, that's happening in our sixth grade classrooms and our kindergarten. But then when you think about that tiered level of support, International Falls has an upside-down triangle. So when you look at the base of your triangle, you have more kids at the wider part of the triangle that are not proficient, and that should be the tip of the triangle, right? And that, I feel, based on the data and the narratives and the research that I've done, hence I want to bring another group in, is a direct correlation of students not being in class for grade level core instruction. In addition to, we are doing better as a school district to make sure that kids aren't being pulled out during that core instruction time for intervention services or speech services, making sure all kids, it's what we would, what I would call as protected time. That is protected time. Nobody gets pulled out for any service during grade level core instruction.
I just think, I mean, I know, I know all the arguments against it and everything, but I just think if you started holding a few kids back because they weren't proficient at their grade level, I think the message would maybe get out that you can't be missing that much school.
That's a, there's so much involved in that.
Oh, I know, I know, and I don't mean to make light of it, or, and I'm not trying to make, it's not, I'm not trying to be funny, I mean serious, like, look at the picture.
Yeah, no, it's just, there's so much to it.
And that is why the new attendance process is going to be rolled out, because, you know, and I didn't make up this policy. The law, the statute says that educational neglect is real, and I don't want to end on a negative note, but educational neglect is real, and there is a point that when attendance meets a certain threshold, it's out of our hands, and it goes to social services. And that's, that is fact.
But you also said that it's the parents' choice if they want to take them out of school, they just have to show that there's reason for them to take one? So it's like, it's a really fine line, right?
There's a certain point, like school policy, our school policy says that there's so many excuse absences that are allowed. After that, you're going to need to have a medical excuse, or you're going to have to, you know, maybe it's mental health. There has to be a reason, because the other thing is, is we can offer different types of education, home-based, you know, we can, you know, homebound services. Because if there is a severe barrier, we're not here to penalize you or catch you. How can we help, right? Access an opportunity. So I just want people to know that we want their kids in school, we want them to be at grade level, and we want their experience to be a positive one.
Absolutely.
You know, I maybe, I don't know if it's a question I threw back on that, but how do you do, like with the kids that are opposite, like the parents that pull their kids out, they get good grades, but they pull their kids out for a mental health day? Are there students that are pulled out once a month to do this certain thing, but they're getting good grades? How do you encourage them to not do that?
So I think, I have to go back and look at my notes, just through conversation, and that's what we have implemented in attendance team. I bet if you ask many people, they've probably received calls already by their attendance team, like, we've noticed there's been five days. We already have children that, we're in week seven, we have children that have missed 15 days of school.
Oh my gosh.
So this is real, and I'm not, I'm not trying to speak negatively, but also, how can we help? Like, is something going on that there is something that we could help you find a resource, a community resource? But then the other piece is, is kids have to be in school, it's the law. So we want to educate, we want to work with them, but we also have a team and our counselors on site that are working on interventions with kids, because if we have to buy alarm clocks, if we have to teach kids how to set the timers on their phones, that's what we're going to do, because we want to partner versus penalize.
I think that's right there, sorry. It's just amazing, I mean, to show that it is community-driven, oh, you know, we're here for you. And just a accountability reminder to say, hey, we noticed, I mean, we're watching.
Yep.
So that's good.
Yeah, that is good to hear.
But I also want to emphasize that your comment, Tina, about students who do well and then are pulled out of class, that, they don't, as far as I know, the policy doesn't say if your grades are okay, you can miss more days. It's still, they all have to adhere, it doesn't matter what your grade is, you still have to adhere. I can't imagine it being different.
Yep, it's not. And you get a phone call, and one of the things would be, there's that threshold, and I think the number is 12, I can't remember exactly. But again, I remind people that for every day a child misses, it takes a teacher three days to make up for that lost time, which also sets the other students back when they could be progressing. We've already had this day, we've had two days this year where we had a number of classes that had 10 students in them on a Friday, 10. A teacher cannot move forward with their lessons when you have 10 children out of 25 in a classroom. So these are real issues, and I, it's important that that's brought to the forefront, because again, a teacher can't move forward with their lesson with 10 students and 15 of them missing. So these are just things that we have to talk about, and we have to be calm and educate and talk about the importance of being here, so.
That's the exact scenario I heard happen this year, was couldn't move forward with the lesson because there's something that's gone.
Okay, playing devil's advocate, okay? They really could move forward with the lesson, and those 15 kids that aren't there, it's their responsibility to get the assignment and figure it out.
Yep.
However, there's also the piece of, you're looking at a student, but you're also looking at a family life, a parent. It might be the student who would love to be there, or the student who would love to catch up and do their things. There might be lots of factors involved in that.
I understand that, I understand that. There's always a reason for whatever people do, I get it, but the teacher's job is to teach the class, and I don't think that having too many kids out, that's not fair to the 10 kids that showed up that day, you know? And I mean, I, of course, made my kids go to school, I had good attendance, and it's frustrating as one of those kids that's there, that then you just basically are having a free-for-all because the teacher doesn't want to move forward with the lesson. I don't agree with that approach.
You know, we're taking a proactive approach, again, education. Like I have spoken to a couple of different athletic and activity registration nights, because families don't know what they don't know, right? And if we don't talk to them and tell them what we're seeing, how can they address it or consider it? So I have an opportunity to talk to two different registration nights of families to let them know our goals as a district, and to let them know the trends that we're seeing and why we're seeing some of these patterns. And I can tell you, most were shocked when I talked about, you know, to date, we've had a couple of students miss 15 days already, or we've had two classrooms with 10 students in them, and just some of the barriers that it places on the teachers and the staff. And it's about educating and having a conversation on how we can do better and address some of these really big pillars that are affecting our student achievement and peer relationships. You know, when you're in school, you build relationships, you build camaraderie, and that's a really important part of being a kid, right?
Right, and part of the education process is, as you stated, Beth, that teachers try to become understanding, that administrators try to dig into reasons so that it can be resolved rather than just plow ahead, but resolved, so.
All right, thank you.
I think we could talk about that for three hours.
Yeah. All right. Policy committee, I think we kind of went over that, we'll start going, have more policies in, on the agenda for the next couple months. Athletic committee?
We do not have any update. We meet next summer 28th, so.
Okay, and then Rock?
Yeah, for legislative stuff, the first part of December, the MSBA, which is the Minnesota School Board Association, is going to have their delegate assembly meet, and they're going to train the delegates, and then they're going to start going through resolutions that are being sent in by districts to try to get some things changed. And one of the things that are huge are these unfunded mandates where you have to do things and you don't have money to do them.
Sprinklers.
Yeah, well, sprinklers is a big one, you're right. And as well as lots of, lots of things regarding education that may or may not be important, the ones that are important and good, but the ones that are not important and you're just throwing time, which means money added, is. just throwing time, which means money added, isn't any good. My big concern is that we have $125 million that have to be cut in special education in the state of Minnesota this year, as well as another $125 million that have to be cut next year. And so they have a committee working on trying to figure out how they're going to do that. It's, it's a horrible amount of money and I'm very fearful for what it's going to do to kids with special needs.
Did we ever, weren't you working with somebody in the school to submit one?
Yeah, I think when it's my turn to talk about that, I will, I think it's on the agenda.
Oh, got it.
Any questions for Rox? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Jess and second by Tina. Any discussion?
I did have one question. Isn't it a contradiction in terms when they're a paid volunteer assistant?
It sounds funny, doesn't it?
I was like, are they a paid volunteer?
Yeah.
I'm sure it has.
Boosters.
Yeah.
Boosters, so.
Right, yeah, that is. That, that language is interesting, so I will look into that.
Okay, I just thought it was overruled and I was like, that's a contradiction in terms.
And then Daley, you're going to have to abstain?
Can his just be moved down to a single or not?
Okay.
So he doesn't have to abstain on the whole thing?
I think Tina did the last time, but.
Okay.
Just because it just made things easier. But, but yeah, all right. Any other discussion? All right. All those who approve the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Dale.
Okay, all right, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to action items. Approving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "A school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD Number 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Lori Trumpeter PBIS donation, $100. Bronco football boosters lawn care, $1,900. Bronco softball boosters lawn care, $325. Bronco baseball boosters lawn care, $900. Bronco basketball boosters shooting machine, $4,041. Bronco volleyball boosters jerseys, $1,365. Bronco swimming and diving boosters, Team Parkas, $2,540. Rainy Lake Medical Center touchdowns and turnovers, $1,000. Rainier Rec Club football cheerleader donation, $500. Tractor Supply PBIS donation, 31 plants to grow." Do I have a motion?
All members.
Oh, three of us.
Second.
All right, Rox?
Dale.
Oh, Dale?
Dale's second.
Dale, you?
Dale's the second.
Dale's the first and Tina's the second.
Tina's the second, okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, whereupon the resolution is declared adopted. We'll approve the support, the resolution submitted by, to MSBA for legislative action on early childhood special education paperwork production submitted by Legislative School Board Representative Roxanne Skoksetich. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Dale. Rox, do you want to?
Yeah. I've been looking forward to this for 35 years, so, if you can believe that. But as an early childhood special education teacher, I knew there was always, there's always been a ridiculously large amount of paperwork involved in working with little kids that have special needs. And whenever you start requiring so much paperwork of a teacher, that means you can have, you, you should have less of a caseload because you don't have time to work with the kids. And therefore, anytime you have time required to do things, it's going to equate to money. And now that we really have a big focus on this cut of dollars in special ed, it's the ideal time to try to find ways to cut out some of the unnecessary things. I met with Ginger Kirstensen and Beth the other day and then Ginger and I met alone and I knew exactly what Ginger was going to tell me, but I wanted to verify it was still going on and it was, the amount of paperwork that's required. So Ginger submitted samples of paperwork for me and then, or to me, and then I prepared the paperwork and submitted it as proof to the Minnesota State Board, or Minnesota School Board Association Legislative Assembly to help convince people that this is ridiculous. And so that will be one of the resolutions that we will, hopefully I will be a part of it. I'm still waiting to hear if I got on the committee, but hopefully I will be a part of being able to discuss it as well, instead of just submitting the paperwork. And what we're trying to do is provide for more time for special ed teachers to work with those little kiddos and their families and less time on paperwork.
Especially the need is growing.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Good job, Rox.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion or questions for Rox? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Maintain our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for the use by students and the community. Approve the updated ISD 361 Emergency School Management Plan. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Tina?
Second.
Rox? Second by Rox. Discussion? Beth, you want?
Yeah, I can tell you that, that the plan is in need of updates. We have included the ALICE framework. We have, our safety team has been working closely with the emergency agencies in town from the police department to the ambulance, just great conversations. We are now in alignment with Radio Lake Medical Center, Koochenee County Courthouse, the police department, and all surrounding school districts being ALICE certified. They have also embedded into their school districts a tiered, not a crisis management, like a violent critical incident, which is what the ALICE framework is for, but they've also, the school districts have brought on a framework called I Love You Guys, and it's more for situations like medical soft lockdown and maybe a conflict in the main office. And so they asked if International Falls would consider taking that so we all have the same language. And I said, we are very interested in making sure we have the same partnership, just not this year, because, you know, we came out with lots of changes and I didn't, didn't want to add that one on too. But I have been speaking with, oh, I forget the officer's name, but we, I've had great Officer Koschik and then Officer Oferdahl, Officer Oferdahl. And they are going to come back with their team at our professional development Back to School Week and they're going to work, we're going to do some scenario-based trainings and introduce I Love You Guys back to school. And that's the other perk of having Ms. Imhoff as part of our team. She is well-trained in this and she has been a part of some of the state-mandated school safety teams, so she is going to be updating our policies and making sure we're aligned with local law enforcement. And she's already started that process and started to look for grants to continue to update the safety and security of our school district. As we know, there's areas we'd really like to invest in if we could.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Motion by Tina and second by Rox to approve the updated ISD 361 Emergency and School Management Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move to closed session. The meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section 13D .05 for the superintendence evaluation. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Tina?
A second.
Second by Jess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.